All righty, good evening, everyone. It's hard to believe we're already a month into the school year, but it seems like it's going very well in all of our buildings. So we're excited and happy to see you guys here with us tonight. Next week at our work, at our board meeting, Ms. Hendricks will have our pledge and prayer, and then we will approve the agenda. But tonight, we're going to go ahead and jump into the superintendent's department reports and actually start off with the superintendent himself.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, board members. I've got two action items for our September 3rd Board of Education meeting. The first action item is our governance team norms and protocols. Board members, you'll recall on July 11th, we met and had a whole board training to discuss our norms and protocols. I want to thank you again for your time and dedication that day to discuss what we believe is a promise to our stakeholders, our community, our staff, or what they can expect from us as a governance team. So you have those norms and protocols that you've reviewed attached and just asking for us to approve those at our September 3rd board meeting. And then we will publish those on our school website or our district website, excuse me.
Okay. Any comments on norms and protocols? Consent?
Yes.
All righty.
The second item of information is our governance team training plan. You guys have that before you. As you know, we are required to submit that to the Department of Education annually.
All righty, consent?
Yes.
All righty, thank you, sir.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
All righty, next, I'd like to welcome up Dr. Bowen to give us the support services report.
For tonight's services report, we're going to have Coach Mack, Mr. Lance McNamara, come forward in a moment. He's our health services manager to talk to you about our nurses. But I have some numbers for you real quick that we gathered this week. We currently have Barrow County School, high school students. We have over 700 students participating in some sort of athletic program at one of the three high schools. We have over 300 students participating in marching band. From our transportation department, we have, we are transporting between 10,000 and 12,000 students per day, approximately 15,000 to 16,000 miles a day. So those are transportation and activities numbers for you. We are blessed to have Lance McNamara in Barrow County Schools and to have him in the position he's in. He is constantly on call. He logs a lot of miles for us. He sends us, he even sends us a weather report every morning. I don't know if you're fortunate enough to get that, but it makes my day every morning when my phone dings. If I'm not at a certain point and getting ready, I know I'm late. So, but I also know what the weather's going to do that day. And that's just one of the many things that Lance does for us. And I know, y'all know him very well, too, and we're happy to have him speak tonight on our nursing program. Lance?
Good evening. How are y'all?
Evening.
Good. Like Dr. Bowen's kind words, yeah, I'm Lance McNamara, better known as Coach Mac. I don't coach anything. But previously, I was the athletic trainer and healthcare instructor at Wynderboro High School. So I've been in the county since 2003. So I've got investment with people that we know. My family's grown up here, so I'm very proud to be in the position I'm in. Tonight, I wanted to give you some information about the state of healthcare within our schools. I'm responsible for three primary pillars, but three additional pillars. My three primaries, what you see on the board, is nursing, athletic training, and medical preparedness. A couple of other areas that I'm involved in is with ensuring that our county follows county, state, federal requirements for individual stay in school. I'm also the liaison between Northeast Georgia Medical Center, Barrow, Brazelton, Gainesville, as well as Northeast Georgia Fissions Group. So with a lot of things that we kind of have a lot of hats on. But tonight, I want to focus on nursing. Our nursing program services a very diverse population. I have 17 nurses, three clinical workers. And if you can read on the board, there's a nice, what our, what our mission is. Our mission is to enhance the education process by the modification or removal of healthcare-related barriers to learning by promoting optimal level of wellness to prepare the student to become successful, responsible, and contributing citizens. That's our focus. That's our primary focus. And we look at that not only just at the student, but also the staff and the faculty and other individuals that come into the building. They basically have a number of primary issues that they deal with. And the bottom there, they treat medically fragile students. We'll talk about what a medically fragile student is. They initiate and administer emergency action plans. Emergency action plans with the school itself. It could also be with the student itself. So one of my pillars is medical preparedness. So I work with John Skinner in the school aspects. I work with Amy Wadley in the special education area and looking and developing individual plans for a student that might be in a medical crisis when that crisis were to involve. They also involve in clinical standard operating guidelines. They document, maintain clinical records. They communicate with athletes, with students, parents, other individuals. It's kind of that unsown, unsung educator in the clinic. It is pretty amazing when you have a student who's been recently diagnosed with some type of medical condition and the parents have no idea what to do. And they reach out to the school nurse, and that school nurse becomes that educator, becomes that primary contact. And sometimes they also coordinate a healthcare for them to be able to do referrals and so forth. Secondary options they do, we, we work with the Department of Public Health to make sure their immunization records are up. We do a mass scoliosis screenings for sixth grade and eighth grade in the springtime. We coordinate dental healthcare. We, we, we work with the education of that. And we also submit different types of statistical records to the state about what we're doing each month and it's the fall in the year. If you would, next slide for me. We serve a diverse population, and there's quite, quite a few things that we look at. And we also populate the medically fragile student. And that, it's not necessarily kind of a scary term, but in a sense, if you kind of look at what it is, the definition of a medically fragile student are students who are individuals whose illness can or will frequently place them in a life-threatening situation. So things that are quote-unquote "may not be curable" but are manageable and need additional services provided to them while that student is in school. So our school nurses personnel, they coordinate with the parent and healthcare, the parent, the guardian, healthcare coordinator, develop a plan. So if you look on the green over to the right, these are the most common type of medically fragile things that we see in our school. So we're using the 23, 24 Infinite Campus numbers from last year. The board was gracious enough to go into developing data visualization, which basically grouped everything together, gives some stats to be able to look at this. I came on this position in 2021, so I'm looking at data from 21 to present. So these numbers are from last year. Last year alone, we had 11, 1177 asthmatic students. These are individuals that required some type of daily medication, whether it was a fast-acting inhaler, was a nebulizer, or something that put them in some type of stress that would require some type of involvement with the nurse. Seizures, epileptic students, 38 diabetic students, severe allergies. That means individuals who, they get too close to a peanut or get close to something, peanut butter, being in the same room could put them into some type of crisis. And then at the same time, we had 176 kids last year that required some type of daily medication, whether they came to the clinic one time or they may have came to the clinic two or three times. So imagine you have your own child, they need an antibiotic, they're supposed to be given four times a day. You can get it first thing in the morning, one time at night. But what happens during the middle of the day? So it's really nice that we have protocols established to where that a parent can bring medication in with sufficient authorization, and we can administer that dosage during the day, after breakfast, after lunch, or before they get on the bus, and so forth. We also have what's called the severe and profound student. Those are individuals that sometimes require some one-on-one nursing. Typically, there are individuals that may have some additional service above and beyond what the clinic provides. So maybe this person may require some type of stomach feeding, like a G-tube, or a tracheostomy care, or something along that kind of thing. Why do students come to the clinic? So if you would, here we go. 24 different categories that we see in the past three years of why a student would come to the clinic. Working with Mr. Thompson, Dr. Thompson, the last couple of years, we try to streamline this that would reflect the categories within our hospital-based system. If you look at the first four on the left-hand side, altered level of consciousness, bleeding, burns, chest pain. These are some of your common ailments why a person would go to the hospital. If you look at number five, daily scheduled medications. Twenty-five, last year, 25% of everything that happened in our clinic was a result of daily medications. So something that some individual needed on that standpoint, either one time a day, twice a day, three times a day. So with those categories, we're able to streamline those things. This is all the same thing that our nurses document things on. So a chief complaint could be that a child may come in and have an injury. The nurse documents it. They do an observation, what's going on? They do some intervention. They also do a discharge. You know, what do we do? Is EMS called? Do we manage it right then and there? Do they go back to class? Do we contact the counselor? Do we, we always contact mom and dad, so they're always knowing what's going on about that. But it's kind of like an urgent care. So if you kind of look at these things, there's a lot of things that happen in that clinic that that nurse is constantly managing. Not just one, but if you walk into that clinic, you may see four or five students in there. Okay, so I know we're focusing on the student, but things happen in our faculty and staff. We've had strokes. We've had heart attacks. We've had fractures. We've had falls. And those things are also managed by that school nurse. So on that note, I want to give you some pretty outstanding numbers that as a result of who came walking through our clinic doors. So, Ms. Rochelle, next slide. Total clinic visits. Again, I took on this role in 2021, so these are the numbers I was looking at. So if you look at the top left, left-hand corner, 2021, 22, return to class was 80%. And we'll talk about it in a moment. But if you look over to the right, total visits, 44,772 individuals went through the thresholds of our clinic. Now, again, that was a COVID year. Now, look at last year. 23, 24, 95,910 clinic visits. I know that last year, I think, we were mentioning upward of 15,000-plus students. It's 95,000 visits. Now, that's also could be that individual, the diabetic student, who gets checked after breakfast, before lunch, before they get on the bus. That's three visits. A student coming in, getting medication. Whatever comes in, comes visits. But it's also that same time where that faculty member comes in and goes, you know, I think my blood pressure's high. Can you check it for me? And we do that. You look at the high schools, look at the middle school and the elementary schools. So last year alone, with all 10 elementary schools, 54,000 students came through our clinics. If I remember correctly, the, the elementary school that had the highest incidence, I believe, was Statum, correct? Statum Elementary had the highest of elementary schools. The middle schools were all pretty much about the same. Wynderboro High School maxed everything out. At one time, I believe, they had 1,300 visits in a month. And remember, that's 20 days. So there are quite a bit of aspects from that. But the thing I'm most proud about, if you look at the 23, 24 return to class, 88.1%. That means that almost nine, every 10 students that came in that clinic, something was mitigated, they got back to class. And we're very proud of that because talking to my neighbors, they don't have that kind of return-to-class number. So we're exceptional in that aspect. So, and again, that kind of falls into our mission. Our mission is removal of healthcare barriers to learning. We give them out of the clinic, we give them what they need. They're healthy, they're safe, we return to learning. That might be our motto for next year for rebranding. So in conclusion, in a summary, one, I want to thank the board for being supportive of what I've been able to do the last couple of years and to be able to state the following. Barrow County Schools has set a place, has set in place qualified and credentialed staff and personnel serving the school community with the appropriate plan, the appropriate equipment and supplies needed to mediate a medical need if it arises. So I'm very, I'll put my nurses up against anybody across the state. They have the equipment they need, they can manage it appropriately, and they know what to do. So from my standpoint, thank you for allowing me to serve. And it gives you a little brief insight of what our school nurses do. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them to the best of my ability.
I do have a couple of questions. How much funding, how many nurses does Barrow County get from the state?
I'm going to defer that question to Dr. Bowen.
We get funding for 4.7 nurses.
And how many do we employ?
I'm sorry?
How many do we employ? How many nurses?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
And three clinic workers. We get funding, it covers us for about 4.7 nurses. I think the dollar number on that is about 360-something thousand dollars. Our expenses are close to 1.4. So they're sending us roughly the 0.4, and you guys are, are providing the 1. And we, as Lance said, we greatly appreciate that. But it also shows that we, we prioritize the safety of our students, but we also prioritize the health of our students. I think the return-to-class numbers and also the impact which, that we have on attendance, to be able to, to have them, parents be comfortable sending them to school, knowing they're going to get healthcare needed at school. It helps us in attendance numbers, too.
And I, I just want to thank y'all because I know when my kids were in school, blood depressed and, you know, had asthma when he was young. And it was so comforting to know that we had people that understood and could help him pick out his right, which one was his arrow chamber or whatever, because he didn't know at that age. So, so I appreciate everything that y'all and the nurses and the people in our schools do.
The advantage of that is where the nurse actually gets, gets a guy, a teacher. You'd be amazed how many times my nurses say, I want to be a teacher. And that's kind of one of the reasons why they're in this environment. It's amazing to, a perfect example I can give you is that a student was recently diagnosed with diabetes in an elementary school. And parents are very, very exposed to that. So a parent for the very first time, doesn't know how to count cards, what insulin, how can we leverage technology to monitor the student? So the nurse played a key factor in working with this child. We actually were able to purchase a diabetic kit where the student could then learn how to take their own blood draw and check their glucose. They had a small pad that can give themselves insulin, and the nurse was able to communicate with that student. And it was amazing to see how that child blossomed and the support from the school administration from that. And the parent was just over, over bowled because the nurse took the time to educate that to them. Children's Healthcare does a wonderful job giving us that information, but to have someone sit down one-on-one in a healthcare aspect to make that parent comfortable, plus at the same time, as a parent, that parent has no problem taking that child and going to that school because they trust that administrator, they trust that, that nurse. And we, with the advantage of Johnson-Clare, we've been able to use those constant glucose monitors and leverage technology to where that we're able to have a device in our clinic with a nurse that's able to monitor. So they can monitor all of those individuals, find their trends, highs and lows, and we can get to that person before they get into a medical crisis. So when they go hyperlycemic, we got their insulin ready. They're hyperlycemic, we got their glucose ready. So we're able to identify that student to where that teacher and the nurse says, hey, said little giant in the clinic is turning low. And that averse, a huge conflict, also averse, you know, healthcare costs, ambulance costs, and things. And that keeps that student in the classroom. That's, that's our mission, our goal.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
All right, next, I'd like to invite up Ms. Houston to present the business services report. Nothing worse tonight.
Well, that's a second. Twice in forever.
All right, how about Mr. Perna with our system operations report?
Good evening. Okay, so our first item here is item of information. This is an update on our Performing Arts Center project, capacity three. And we're moving right along there. We're on schedule and making very good progress. One of the advantages of Little Rain, you can really get things done outside. But so they're well underway with, with block work, with painting on the interior of the building, drywall. And we've got our last concrete pour scheduled for next month. So very, very pleased with the progress of, of that project. Okay. And first of two action items tonight. The first is we're asking the superintendent to recommend acceptance and approval of our Barrow County School System's FY26 State Capitol Outlay Application and Start Date forms for renovation and modification of Hayman Morris Middle School and renovation of Wynderboro High School. We submitted our application to the state for these projects. They have since reviewed it and approved it. And they've got it in their FY26 Capitol Outlay Program Budget Request. This work would be accomplished during the summers of 2025 and 2026. And we anticipate a similar phasing plan for Hayman Morris as we had at Bethlehem County line over this past summer, just with the size of that school and its scope. You know, we need two summers to complete that work. Winder, we may be able to do in one summer. We, we need to have some more discussion about that with our architect, engineer, and, and construction manager once they come on board. But this is, you know, we reached that 20-year mark at our schools. And in this case, by the time we do the work, we'll be beyond that. You know, we need a refresh of paint, lights, floors. At Hayman Morris, it would be HVAC system replacement as well. And we'll do some other things while we're there. Working on these projects, creating a couple of additional classroom spaces at Hayman Morris. Probably some work at the ag area of Wynderboro High School, creating a weight room space at Hayman Morris, those types of things. So a lot to do there. It's, it's work that needs to, to take place. We're excited to get going with those. But that's, that's our recommendation before you tonight.
All right, any questions? Consent?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Our second item is something that we brought before you last month. This is our facilities usage policy. We've received no public comment over the past 30 days. And so we are asking the superintendent to recommend removing policy KG, facilities usage, from public comment and approving that policy as amended.
Any questions?
Yeah, I did have a, and then I think superintendent sent, sent it to you, the copy of it. There was not specified in this document, this particular thing that was given to us. I just wanted to add what was added into the red that says about the board has the right that we, including but not limited to school farms or agriculture land with the power to control the same. Add that, that little line in there.
Okay.
So that if students do need to use our farms, you know, they did before. That just was not specified.
Okay, perfect. Is everyone good with adding that item to the consent agenda with the amended request from Ms. Kelly? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All righty, next, we have Dr. Moten with Teaching and Learning.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Rayber. As you alluded to, we have had our first month of school, and it has indeed been successful for our students and for our staff. And Mr. McNamara, thank you for keeping our students healthy. And so since they are healthy, they are prepared to succeed with literacy. And so our presentation this evening is to share what has taken place with the legislation for early literacy and how our school system is implementing the different initiatives that are to be taking place in the school system for our students to accomplish all that is required of them and so that they're proficient readers by third grade. So our presentation tonight has several presenters with me, and that is Dr. Matt Michael, Dr. James, Ms. Heather Cates. They're going to give updates for Georgia for the Literacy Act, the goals for the state, our system updates and where we are as a school system with literacy and what's taking place, the instructional materials that you approved, and we appreciate your investment in our students as early learners. Universal screening, our tiered reading plans, intervention plans to support students who may not be reading on grade level, and then parent communication, keeping our parents updated on what's happening with literacy. And then the investment in our staff so that there's professional learning and our teachers are prepared to deliver quality instruction. And then in the spring, we'll be back to talk to you about what has taken place this year. But we're going to start with Dr. Matt Michael, and she's going to give you an update on how things have gone so far with the new literacy materials as well as the Georgia Literacy Act and the legislation.
Good evening. So as Dr. Moten just alluded to, we had a pretty significant law that was passed last year. And last March, I came with a group of district administrators, instructional coaches, and teachers. And we shared updates about the law and information about the law. And we also made a pretty big ask for literacy curriculum materials. So we're excited to share our progress with you tonight. So on the screen there, you'll see just an overview. You saw this in March, just an overview of the timeline about when the law was passed. It's very similar to many laws that have been passed just like it in other states. And the focus really is on our K-3 students because we know if we can catch those students early, we can prevent literacy difficulties later. So the state goal is to improve literacy outcomes across the state by doing several things. The items on the screen that are highlighted, those are the items that are actionable for local education agencies. So those are the updates we'll be providing tonight. And Dr. Moten just reviewed all of those things that we're going to be sharing with you, and I'm going to talk about instructional materials. I'll get us started. So if you'll remember back to March, you learned that one of the requirements of the law is that we use a comprehensive core curriculum with our K-3 students. We had to choose materials that came from a state-approved list. And Dr. Leduff will have to certify that we're using high-quality instructional materials by this December. We're very pleased to say that we purchased these materials in June. Teachers have started using them. They've received training on them, so we're in a good place for him to certify. Just a reminder, a comprehensive core curriculum is a little bit different than what we've used in recent years. We've kind of piecemealed our own together in recent years. A comprehensive core curriculum includes everything that teachers need to teach all of their ELA standards. We adopted HMH into reading, so it was purchased in June. Teachers received training, they're using it. At some point, probably this spring, we will bring back some teachers to give you some testimonials about how it's going. Right now, they're kind of up to their ears in learning about the new materials. But I've been in every school. I just finished my last school visit today, have gotten to speak with every grade-level team, and I'm hearing good things. They're a little overwhelmed because there are a lot of materials that come with the program, but they're very excited and grateful to have it. So thank you. If you're curious about what a daily, what a daily literacy block looks like with HMH, you'll see the daily structure there on the screen. The daily schedule includes direct instruction in foundational skills, which we know as phonics, vocabulary, reading comprehension, and writing. A lot of that is whole class. But there's also time built into the schedule for students to receive small group differentiated instruction, to meet them where they are and to take care of their unique needs. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Heather Cates. Are we talking about universal screening?
Hello. Yes, so we are required to do universal screening in reading. So for all of our K-3 students, three times a year as part of the early literacy law. Our schools are also screening our fourth and fifth graders. They felt like that was also important, so we will be doing that for K-5 students. The purpose is that early identification, right? We're screening everyone to see who is at risk of a significant reading deficiency. We're using Dibbles on the Amplify platform for most of our schools. We do have two schools that have the L4GA grant, and so they are using, it's Dibbles on a different platform, kind of a cadence. Both of those screeners are on the state-approved list. So just like the curriculums, they've also provided a list of the screeners that we can use. And we will be communicating with families. We're required by the law to communicate the results of that screener. So three times a year, we are going to be telling them whether their student is at risk or not at risk of a sufficient, significant reading deficiency. And then we are in this process right now. So most of our screeners have been administered at this point, and we are using that data in data teams to identify the students who need additional support to figure out what additional screening and diagnostic information we can gather on their reading needs and then how we are going to group them together to intervene and provide those interventions. and then how we are going to group them together to intervene and provide those interventions. So, tiered reading intervention plans. We are required to do those for all students who have a significant reading deficiency. Now, I just wanted to give you a little background of the lingo of that. And my role in Barrow County Schools, I'm the MTSS Coordinator. And MTSS stands for a multi-tiered system of supports. So, that's the framework that we are using as we provide a continuum of supports to all of our students, academically, behaviorally, and their well-being. So, there are three tiers when we talk about that system. Tier one being for 100% of our students. That is what everyone is getting. Tier two provides targeted, small-group instruction. And then tier three is where we provide more individualized, intensive interventions. So, I just wanted you to have that background. So, when we say a tiered reading intervention plan, we are talking about intervention plans for those tiers that specify how we are providing the interventions for the students. So, whether that be in a small-group setting, whether that be individualized, you know, one-on-one. So, we are going to be starting this process of making these plans in the next several weeks with, I've been out at schools and will be going out at schools to help support our teachers in making these plans. And we have, we feel like really great interventions that they also are going to be using to provide intervention to students.
May I ask a question about that?
Yes.
It just occurred to me. When you're doing the tier three interventions where you've identified children who need the most help, do you have any idea yet how many children that will be?
So, we are-
Percentage?
Yes. In that multi-tiered system of supports, we expect that about 20% of our students are going to need additional help, right? They're going to need some extra time, maybe a smaller group. And within that, we hope that about 5%, 3% to 5% of our students will need that tier three support. Did that answer your question?
It did indeed. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I'll be interested to see the results next year.
Yes, as will I. I'm very, I'm very hopeful and very excited that the changes with this law are really going to help us move our students in literacy. Okay, so who will receive the tiered reading intervention plan? All students who are, have that significant, are at risk for the significant reading deficiency, which we are defining as below the 25th percentile on this universal screener. So, that is from the state, on the state-approved list of screeners, they defined what the cutoff would be for being at risk. And they, it's well below, so below that 25th percentile. So, that's who we are making these plans for. All of those students will have a tiered reading intervention plan, and we will be receiving explicit systematic reading intervention.
Awesome. So, two additional components that we have focused heavily on are parent communication, how we plan to effectively communicate with parents in regards to the literacy laws from both the school level as well as the district level in a way that they feel that they are truly indeed a part of the educational team, and how we provide support to our staff so they feel confident and comfortable with the new state guidance, but also considering the sustainability of support and what that will look like, not just this year, but years to come. So, some different ways that we are making sure that we are communicating with parents. We're, as Heather mentioned, notifying parents of universal screener data three times a year. If a student falls well below that benchmark range, then we're notifying parents and providing students with a tiered reading intervention plan. Also mentioned by Ms. Cates, we have recently kicked off our family engagement series. So, we're hoping to have a lot of conversations with families on our new literacy laws, on our tiered reading intervention plans. We recently have the Beyond the Bell podcast series that was released, I think, this week or maybe last week, that talked about the new state guidance. We have our HMH into Reading instructional model so that parents know what to expect, so that teachers know what to expect in each module. We also have an online parent resource. So, our goal this year is to make more parents aware of those resources that are available. And then also, including some specific questions for our survey when we have our comprehensive needs assessment so that we know how to best support families in regards to the new literacy laws. And in regards to staff training, we talked about the sustainability of these supports and what it looks like. We have training, of course, coming from the district office level, through myself, through our district content specialist, through Heather Cates. We're all in schools and making sure that we're able to support the work that our leaders and our teachers are going through right now. Support through our instructional coaches. We have school-level and school-based professional learning that's taking place across all of our elementary schools and all of our schools. We also had the opportunity to meet with Northeast Georgia RISA for support. We met with them last week, and they brought a team out to just look at what our needs are as far as what Barrow County needed and developing a plan on how we can support our leaders and how we can support our teachers. So, we are extremely excited about that. Dr. Matt Michael and I will be working closely with them as well as our instructional coaches on planning some upcoming professional learning for our digital learning days and using them to also come in and co-facilitate some training. So, we are extremely excited about that as well as our instructional coaches. We currently have the Georgia Literacy Academy where all of our staff members are going through a web-based, web-based training across, not just in Barrow County, but across the state of Georgia so that we can support those areas that we need support in as far as oral language and literacy and those components. And we also have a lot of different areas of support. We have some Department of Education days where we'll be sending some staff members out, and Dr. Matt Michael and I, as well as our instructional coaches, will attend. We have some opportunities where we'll go out to some literacy module lessons and some different professional learning. So, we do feel like not only are our teachers being trained, we're also in the work and being trained with them so we can know how to support them. And this provides a timeline of just all of what's going on with our Literacy Academy. All of our teachers will be completing the Literacy Academy by the end of, well, by June of 2025. And we are currently working with our instructional coaches during our four district-wide days to professional learning days to have reflection sessions so that we can work with teachers and help them understand the different connections between the modules with the literacy academies and to our HMH into Reading as well as our new ELA standards. So, we can make sure we're merging all of those and making sure that we're successful in doing what's best for kids.
Are there any questions?
I have a, I guess it would be a question. First of all, just thank y'all for getting this up and running as quick as you have, which takes a lot of work by a lot of different people. I thought about parent engagement, and it was, the parents have an online link they could go to. Will we be able to track how many parents actually take advantage of that?
I'm not certain about the analytics and if we'll be able to capture that, but that is something we can check on and bring your report back.
I think it would be nice to know just how many people or how many parents are actually engaged with that.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All righty. Next, I'd like to welcome up Dr. Kurtz with Human Resources.
This evening, Human Resources Division has one information item and one action item for the board. And as you know, human resources in a school setting is a, has a busy season, and we are concluding our busy season right now. And so, we have some updates on our 24-25 hiring session and the work that was done and what was accomplished by the Human Resources team. Director Megan McNally is going to go over some of that information for you.
Good evening, Dr. Leduff and board. Thank you so much for allowing my team some time tonight to share an exciting update with you about our hiring. So, we are extremely proud to announce that we have 382 new employees with us. Being able to hire that many qualified employees really is a testament to who we are as a system and as a community. You'll see that this number includes 135 classified staff members. This is going to be like our paraprofessionals or our transportation employees. You will see that there are 222 certified new employees. That's going to be like our teachers or our administrators or counselors, anyone that has a certificate. And then you'll see 26 student workers and lay coaches. So, with the hiring of 382 new employees comes a lot of work and in us getting them ready and prepared to be with our students. As you can imagine, it's not an easy task to start with recruiting them and then checking their certification and requirements for whatever position that they're in, providing them with onboarding documents and assistance, assisting them with background checks and fingerprinting, and then establishing their benefits, all while offering two in-person events. And so, I'd really love to brag on my team, and I'm not sure if this is a recognition, but y'all, they are the best team. It is absolutely not possible without them. They are amazing, and they're, they're all right here. And I just appreciate all that they do. So, I would like to give you a quick overview of the two in-person events that I mentioned. The first is our Barrow Basics event, and this is an in-person onboarding that we offer. It's actually optional. We do not require new employees to come in for that because it's supplemental to the virtual onboarding that we already provide them. We offered multiple sessions throughout the summer to try to make it as convenient for our new employees as possible. It offers an opportunity for the new employees to come in, to meet the team, to go over the information that we provided to them in their onboarding, to set up their email. We have IT available. We really just try to make it as easy as we can for our new employees as they transition into our system. It allows us some time to get to know them and welcome them on a more personal level. So, we had 185 people choose to join us for those sessions. And then the next session is our new teacher orientation. And we had 200 teachers join us for this. We had presentations to introduce them to the resources that are available to teachers and to provide them with information about the new teacher induction program, which tells them how we plan to support them, not just that day, but throughout the year. So, we have been able to successfully fill most of our positions. We only have six certified positions that are open at this time. And actually, one of those was just added as a growth position. And so, I know that you guys know this. This is amazing. Not many HR directors can stand in front of you and say, "We have a handful of open positions." So, we are so proud of this. Of course, we are always looking to be fully staffed. We have some recruiting events that are coming up. We have our Rapid Recruiting, which is just a continuous online job fair that we offer. We bring in our student teachers, and we try to go ahead and snag them before they have the opportunity to even finish their student teaching. We want to go ahead and get them. And then we also have some classified job fairs that we have coming up. So, we aim to be fully staffed. We're almost there. But we, of course, we would love to come back and share with you all of the recruiting stuff that we are doing. We look forward to doing that soon. But thank you so much for your support. Thank you for being our cheerleaders. And we're just really proud to be able to share this with you tonight.
Any questions?
Okay. I have one, and you probably don't have the answer, and that's okay. But do we have an idea of how many of the folks that we have hired have come back to us who have either lived in Barrow, graduated from one of our schools, and come back? Are we tracking that? Because I know we've been very diligent about trying to encourage them to come back.
So, we do, in our new application system, as of maybe two years ago, have a place where we are tracking that data. I don't have that number for you, but I think it's something we could easily get. So, yes, we can, we can get that to the superintendent to, to share with all the board members. Thank you for asking. And we are tracking that. I saw that's a part of our strategic plan. I know our communications department has some, some plans to, to leverage that for more and more folks to come back and want to be a part of our system. Thank you for the question.
Well, this is how I know you're doing a good job. Because when I'm out in the community, I talk with parents, and especially grandparents, who are telling me how phenomenal our school system is and how great their children and/or grandchildren's teachers and, and administrators are. So, y'all are obviously doing a great job, and you have no idea how much. I appreciate that.
Thank you for the kind words. It is an amazing team, and I'm happy and proud to be a part of it. I peeked around the corner a little bit in preparation for this, looking at some neighbors, and saw one a little smaller than us with 27 certified openings. So, we're feeling pretty good about six. We would like to, I know this team wants to be perfect on all things, all the time. It absolutely kills them to have even six. And as a result, our principals are having to work hard to figure out how to fill those gaps. But, but we're getting all those things filled, and I'm happy to be a part of the team. I have one action item for the board this evening. It is concerning policy GARH, employee leaves and absences. In the last regular session, the board placed that on the table for public comment. Since that time, we've received one comment saying, wholeheartedly, they agreed with the change because the change is 120 hours of paid parental leave to 240 hours of paid parental leave to be in compliance with the recently passed House Bill 1010. At this time, on behalf of the superintendent, I'd like to recommend that revised policy GARH, employee leaves and absences be placed on the consent agenda for approval at the next regular board meeting.
Any questions? Consent?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. And last, we'll have Dr. Thompson with our strategic information report.
Good evening. We have two items of information and two action items this evening. The first thing we're going to look at is our July communications report. And because I know you are sick of me and my endless jokes about our Twitter numbers, I'm going to ask Ms. Nicole Valles, who is our director of communications, to come up and highlight a couple of items on the communications report. And let me say, Nicole is who compiles this every month and does a fantastic job with that.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Hello. I know you're probably getting sick of seeing it, but we're so proud to talk about the great things going on in Barrow County Schools. I don't mean sick of seeing that, but I mean sick of seeing the communication report. Excuse me. Rochelle, if you could please scroll through. The first thing is the, to the communicate with the remind total messages. I just wanted to bring your attention to something. It's the next slide. Where it talks about contact us emails. So, this is where you'll notice in the last month, if you would have looked at that one, it would say that we had less contact emails coming through. So, what this shows is that in July, a lot more parents were, of course, needing information because school was about to start. So, it just shows the influx of emails that our website receives. And each of these go to principals at their individual schools, and they answer them, or front office staff. Or in transportation's case, you can see that 174 emails came through in the month of July just to get those bus route informations and all of that. So, if you could go to the next slide. We just like to show popular engagement posts. You're aware of all of the great things that are being said about our staff and our thing, our successes at Barrow County Schools. And then the next slide. This just gives you a picture of, again, don't look at Twitter X, right? We're, but no. That one is, we're not really posting to that as much. And I could just give you a little background on that. It's just not as popular, and we don't have a lot of family engagement on there. It also has just some concerns with security. So, we will keep our Barrow County account there, just so that way we have the name. But we're really not focusing on that as much, but I still keep it on the report. So, this just shows the growth that we've had over the past month that we've been up 76 followers on Facebook. And where we're really trying to grow is LinkedIn to help our amazing HR team and get more hires in. So, that's one focus for us. The next slide. These are just, if you can just cycle through these. These are just popular posts that I hope you saw. And then this, I'd like to see, I know Dr. Leduff is probably really loving that his face is up there. But the podcasts that Jackson, Sierra, and Michael put together called Beyond the Bell, if you haven't had a chance to listen to it, it's on our website. It's on Spotify. It's, of course, on YouTube. But this is just a way that we try to present information in a different way. So, where we might have a written story, we might share it on Facebook. We, we might have a video, but we also offer the podcast because everyone learns differently and everyone communicates differently and receives that information differently. So, that's why we're trying to utilize a different medium. So, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback on that. So we've gotten a lot of positive feedback on that. Again, this just shows some of the popular videos. We're trying to really grow our YouTube channel. Jackson Hensley is doing an amazing job with that. You can see that our videos are watched six-thousand times in July. And then this, to answer Ricky's question, so our analytics on the website. So in July, the page views, again, they spiked. If you would have looked at June's numbers, they were lower. But this shows our top pages. So we are able to see analytics on a specific page. However, because we don't have sign-in requirements on our website, we wouldn't be able to know if it was a parent looking at that page at this point, but we can certainly track how many views we get to a certain page. And especially, we love to look at that when we do certain campaigns, so we can see if what we're doing is working. Are there any questions?
Communications are great.
Oh, thank you.
Fantastic.
And I certainly hope y'all appreciate the work Nicole does in compiling that every month. It really is a labor of love for her, but it's a tremendous amount of work. The next item we have of information is our eleventh-day enrollment report. In this particular case, until the eleventh day, we don't entirely know how many students we have, because many of them will be no-shows, and by state law, when they have not attended one of the first ten days, they can be dropped from our rolls. So that's when we get our first estimate. So I'm going to ask Ms. Jenny Persinger, our Director of Data Assessment and Accountability, to give you some highlights from the eleventh-day count.
Good evening. So at your last board meeting, you saw our first-day count, and that one is the one that drives me the most crazy, because I have no control of that one. It is literally a count of bodies in the building, and I'm not at the building, so I'm anxiously waiting here for those schools to, all of our schools, to submit those numbers to me. But then, after, like Dr. Thompson said, the tenth day of school, any student that has not yet walked in our buildings, we drop them from our roll based on state rule. And then our eleventh-day count is our first actual enrollment count of these students are still enrolled, have walked in our building at least once. Today, actually, is our nineteenth day of school, so we will do a twentieth-day count tomorrow. I have a little bit of preview, and I can tell you it's up higher than this number. And then generally, after Labor Day, when people that are moving from other parts of the country, when they're used to starting school later, our numbers will jump again. So I appreciate the registration staff that has worked to get all of these students registered. I also have some staff members that work to set up all those new teachers with their accounts, so that they can get in and teach these children that are registering with us. And as we've shown you before, I think this will just continue to grow, so stay tuned.
And Rochelle, if you'll open up the second addendum to the enrollment report. You know, one of the things that we have talked to the board a lot about is the growth that is actually coming down the pike, and we're going to certainly have a lot more on that in the future. But what I wanted to highlight tonight was, we actually were a little surprised, the numbers were a little lower than we actually anticipated at this eleventh-day count. And so I thought that was a good time to highlight a little bit about how we do projections more than we did last summer, which is, when we went over this, you can see the numbers we have projected for the next five or six years. That is based on the fact that there are approximately nine-thousand homes of various types in Barrow County that have been approved in various stages of development. We anticipate that's going to mean adding around thirty-five-hundred to four-thousand students over the next five to six years. But when those shallowed up, one of the things we always wanted to look at is, there's two sides to that coin. There's the production of housing, there's also the market itself, and the sales of housing. So we track that as well. So what you have is data from Georgia MLS, which compiles a lot of data from across the state, in different counties, estimates the housing market. And what you can actually see is that over the last two years, looking at the first half of the year, total housing units sold is pretty consistent with the prior year. It's down a tick, but not a whole lot. And as you can see, housing sales tend to be cyclical through the year. You don't sell the same amount each month. And the second slide, you have housing, new housing postings over the course of each month, and those are also consistent. So we are not seeing a downturn in the housing market. We think this is just a little quirky with some of the registration, because as Ms. Persinger said, we're actually up around seventy students just in the last week from the eleventh-day count. So in this time of year, you get a lot of flux of students in and out, so we are still anticipating adding a significant number of students. So I just wanted to update that for you. So are there any questions on that? All right. We're going to move into two action items, and I'm going to ask Mr. Justin Edwards, our network manager, who is going to ably fill in for Mr. John St. Clair, who could not be here tonight, who is going to talk about our pure storage RFP.
Good evening, everyone. Our current network storage solution is reaching in support life and needs to be replaced. We posted an RFP and had four vendors respond. SHI met the terms of our RFP and has done previous business with the district in a satisfactory manner, and is not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. The superintendent recommends the awarding of the purchase of a pure storage array from the low-bid respondent of SHI, Somerset, New Jersey, for the amount of one-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars.
Any questions? Consent?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Justin.
It is very strange hearing someone else say SAM.gov database, but you know.
Now we can exhale.
Everything old is new again. The last action item I have for you tonight is a policy revision that the superintendent recommends go on the table for review for a thirty-day period. I am fairly proud that I think this is the simplest policy revision that anyone has ever brought to the Barrow County Board of Education, but I want to unpack why we're asking you to approve a one-word change. So this particular policy, Policy JR, deals with student records. This policy is basically a restatement of two federal laws. That is, the Federal Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, or FERPA, and the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendments, PPR-A. Those are two federal laws that deal with how student records have to be maintained, and the privacy associated with them. And then also several clauses that come from Georgia state law related to open records and general sunshine laws. The crux of this is, we try to be stewards of student privacy. So generally speaking, the only two ways individuals can have access to personal information on students is, they are either a parent or guardian of a student, meaning they have those rights, or they're someone that the parent or guardian has consented can have those records. The second class are our actual educators, our staff, who have an educationally necessary reason to see that data. And even internally, we work really hard to make sure only staff that need to see confidential data actually see it. However, FERPA, federal law, allows for what's called directory information, and this is actually important, because there are certain pieces of information that if we had to constantly have parents affirmatively say, "Yes, you can release that on my child," you can't have things like yearbooks, programs, at playbills, and sporting events, the graduation inserts we put in papers, or the honor rolls that we list in papers. So what FERPA allows a board of education to do is designate certain information as directory, and we give parents the option to opt out of that. So if they don't want that released, we won't. But otherwise, unless they affirmatively opt out, we can release that information. We have every year around, you know, half dozen parents that will take advantage of that and opt out, but it's not many. Why this is important is because if you don't have the language very clear, people can take advantage of that. The last time this was revised was in December of 2016, and the reason was, we had email addresses of parents as directory information. And what was happening was vendors were using that information to request rosters of parent emails, so they could actually just spam them with advertising and products. And so we had the board remove email address as directory information. FERPA says that school boards may release the information that's directory, and you can see about halfway down what Rochelle has, you can see we list student name, grade level, photograph, participation in clubs and sports, weight and height, if they're a member of an athletic team, dates of attendance, and then degrees and awards honored, is our directory. We say pretty clearly, if you look below that, any request for disclosure which fails to significantly advance the educational interest of a student or students may be denied by the superintendent. But if you go to the language above it, it says, "will be disclosed upon request subject to the policy." Now, we think the subject of the policy will encompass that, but what we are finding is that different individuals and organizations are becoming increasingly sophisticated in how they request this, and they pay very close attention to language. There's actually a website, you can go to FOIA Buddy, where you can actually, it'll do it for you and put an F Freedom Information Request in. We're starting to get more and more of those. So we just want to make sure we're protecting our students' privacy, and we think by just changing this one word from "will" to "may," that will tighten the language up enough to where if we get a request that we think is someone trying to use our students' data for something that's not advancing their education, we can simply deny that. We're pretty confident we can do that now. We'll be very confident if you change this word. So I'm asking for a one-word policy revision. I'll answer any questions you have.
All right. Any questions? Consent?
Great job explaining it.
Very much. Thank you, sir. All righty, guys. At this time, we're going to go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or reading of a public officer or employee, order, interview, applicants for superintendent.
Yes.
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 All righty. We'll be back in a few minutes.
Absolutely.
The YES Program is one of three transition programs offered in Barrow County. The program is designed to help high school seniors enhance their preparedness for independent employment post-graduation. Partnering with Goodwill of Northeast Georgia, the Georgia Vocational Rehabilitation Agency, and High School High Tech, the program guides students through a three-phase training program. In the fall semester of their senior year, participants engage in a transition class at Sims Academy, earning one elective credit. This phase focuses on setting career goals and acquiring essential job readiness skills. Subsequently, during the spring semester, motivated and reliable students have the opportunity to embark on a paid internship, earning another elective credit. This internship serves as a practical paid work experience. The program concludes with full-time job assistance after graduation. Operating out of Sims Academy, the YES Program is available to seniors from Wynder Barrow High School, Appalachia High School, and the Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy. The program's overarching purpose is to help students with barriers to employment, transition to the workforce after high school. The program achieves these goals with activities like tours to local manufacturing and distribution centers, on-campus training in employability skills, and paid internships with community partners. These internships provide a sheltered work experience, better preparing students for successful entry into the workforce. The YES Program at Sims Academy is a transformative initiative, uniquely positioned to empower high school seniors for independent employment. By seamlessly integrating classroom learning, hands-on internships, and community partnerships, the program not only equips students with essential skills, but also fosters a supportive environment that champions their journey toward a successful transition to the workforce.
This is where traditions begin and legacies are built.
At Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy, we're sparking innovations of tomorrow by empowering our students today. Our academic course offerings are rigorous to prepare students for life beyond high school. And we offer a variety of art programs that encourage students to express themselves, no matter the medium. We are a non-traditional school, where students will discover their passion, prepare for their future, and explore the intersection where the arts and sciences complement one another. This is BASSA, and we are the Blazers.
Project Search is a very unique transition program, different from anything we have in Barrow County. It started at Cincinnati Children's Hospital in Ohio in the mid-1990s, and now there are six-hundred-and-ten sites in forty-seven states and ten countries, including right here in Barrow County. To participate in Project Search, a student has to be a Barrow County student between the ages of eighteen and twenty-two, with barriers to employment such as intellectual or developmental disabilities. They have to be finished with their high school graduation requirements, and willing to defer graduation until the end of their Project Search year. It's during that year that they come to the Wynder Housing Authority here at the Wimberly Center, and they participate in three rotations that last anywhere from ten to twelve weeks. They have a manager and a mentor that they report to and work alongside, along with skills training with our partners. And it's just a really unique program, because the end goal is part-time or full-time employment for the interns.
Here at the Wimberly Center, the Project Search students are learning a variety of different skills. They're learning data entry, they're learning accounts payable, payroll, records retention, they're learning how to shred, environmental services.
Restaurant sanitation, doing a lot of washing dishes and helping clean floors. There's a good aspect of prep, some general prep cook.
I do dishes, I do pots. It teaches you, if you want to walk out of kitchen, how to do bees collection.
I'm teaching them how to answer the phone, how to take messages, how to respond to, interact with people coming into the facility.
Well, my first internship was in the front office, like in the receptionist area, and I learned how to, like, copy papers, scan stuff into the computer, answer the phone, and mail out letters.
We're cutting grass, we're harvesting crops, we're doing weeding, we're doing some irrigation work, digging, pretty much anything when it comes to working on the farm, we try and tackle it.
Well, my first internship, I learned how to cut grass, which I never learned how to do that.
The skills that the interns are learning through my department are their maintenance skills, they're learning lawn care skills, we're doing janitorial skills.
We mow tides, trim, sow, repot.
My task is to go along beside them and make sure that they have a good understanding of what the job is that they are being asked to do, and for me to make sure that they are able to do it, and then I kind of back away and let them do their thing.
I learned how to use a knife better in culinary, and then I learned how to use a drill, like putting pressure on it is a good way to use a drill like that.
They learn how to appropriately interact in a real workplace. It's not simulated in a classroom, it is an actual place of business.
We go over important topics like interview preparation, resumes, how to keep a job, job searching, how to deal with conflict resolution, work with different bosses, just a lot of different topics to prepare them for the workplace.
A lot of the things that our employees are doing, a lot of repetitive tasks and things of that nature, things that we are able to have the Project Search students handle, and they do it quite well. And so it's just a cool collaboration, and you have a lot of teamwork and synergy. So I love it. I've enjoyed having them.
They bring an excitement to the general task that we kind of take as mundane tasks, but they bring excitement to that. And it really, you know, invigorates us to get excited about some of the things that we just take for granted.
Project Search has been an amazing benefit for all four of our interns this year. Without it, I'm not sure that they would have even known what they were capable of doing.
We get to both learn things, we get to get some work done and have a good time doing it.
What I like about it is because I keep my, it keeps me moving, it keeps me busy, and it really helps me how to be able to do it, get a job.
Well, I think Project Search benefits the community because it is opening up an opportunity for students that have some type of a learning disability to be employed.
We don't want these kids leaving our school system at age twenty-two and not having a clear direction, not having somewhere to go and feel needed and feel productive and really demonstrate what their true abilities are.
It's been very much a learning experience, I think, on both ends, and very enjoyable. They seem to always have a good attitude and to show up ready to work.
It's very educational for the interns and for us, because we learn how to teach them.
It's teaching everybody something, the staff plus the interns. Everybody's learning, plus we're getting, you know, once they get acclimated to what we're doing, they're able to assist and help, which speeds things along. It benefits the company as a whole.
You get to work with new people, and you get to, you get to learn new things and stuff.
I believe it offers them just some real-world experience through these internships. I've just really been honored to be part of it.
Project Search benefits the community by letting people from the community interact with the Project Search students. So people that may have had some stigma against people with disabilities get to meet these kids and realize they're just like anybody else, and get to learn from that experience.
The Project Search students have grown quite significantly just in the short time that they've been here. They seem to be very happy to be here.
I've just been constantly blown away, and I find myself bragging to my family and friends about the skills and the abilities that the interns have gained throughout this course of the school year. course of the, of the school year.
I think that their courage has grown, their determination to do things has grown. I just feel like that they're more confident in themselves now that they're working with us.
So I've seen the Project interns grow during my time with me by just really learning that they can do things that they didn't think they could do before, and doing some tasks that they haven't done before, and really enjoying it.
I love being able to see what the interns are going to be doing and to be able to see how accomplished they are at each one of their tasks. I had no idea that they were all capable of so much.
They have a great attitude, they are very motivated, and I've just been impressed with them.
Project Search students have really changed the culture by making it a happier workplace. And, you know, that not only includes the Wynder Housing Authority, but all of our partners under roof. It's made it a happier place to be.
I would say it's brought everybody closer together. They love the environment of working with, with the interns. Kind of brings happiness to the, to the whole group as a, as a whole here in the Wimberly Center, working with them.
I can't imagine having our Project Search program anywhere else because of the welcoming impact that Wynder Housing Authority's staff has had on us.
I enjoy being here every day and learning new skills. And it's a perfect way to learn what a job world will look like in the future.
I feel good about working here because you get to learn new experience and knowing that it's not the same job over again, you get to learn different stuff, how to do that, different jobs.
It's really gotten me someplace that I've really enjoyed.
I believe these Project Search participants have a great chance to perform and not only just get a job, but to excel.
And we need for the community to get behind us and really give these kids the opportunity that they deserve. The community's going to end up with some pretty fantastic employees.
I just think it's a great opportunity for these interns. It's something that they'll never forget, and we will, we'll never forget here either.
Even if moving forward, we are not the direct mentors, I'd still would love to have some sort of involvement with Project Search. It's meant a lot to us.
It's just an awesome opportunity to pass something along to somebody who, who might never get the opportunity to do that, and we're giving them that opportunity. So I think it's a great thing.
Their dreams of the future has changed. They have realized that they can do what they dream to do, and there's resources for them to be able to do it.
I like Project Search because it's taught me a lot more than, than any other place that I've been in.
I would definitely do Project Search again.
I will for Project Search.
This is the annual Bookbag Drive, where we are able to give a bookbag of school supplies to students who need them in our community, so that way they're set up for success on the first day of school. It's a big community effort where community members and church members and different civic organizations donate supplies and bookbags to make sure that every student in Barrow is taken care of.
My favorite part is just seeing all the different organizations in Barrow County coming together to help out, help out our community. One of the things I really love about being in Barrow County is how much our community does come together and helps everybody out.
I would like to thank, obviously, Bethlehem Church, and then all the other churches in the community that gave backpacks and are making such a big impact in this community. It means a lot to me because I see a lot of families on a daily basis that's going through some struggles and things, and it just means a lot when we can bear the burden of giving them a bookbag, and they don't have to make a choice between food, bookbag, medicine, stuff like that.
Hey, everyone. My name is Joseph Brown. I'm the Community and Global Missions Pastor here at Bethlehem Church. And we just want to say, this was the biggest year of Bookbag Drive we've ever had in the history of every year that we've done this. It's been absolutely incredible. We gave away over 2,400 bookbags this year, a ton of cars. We shut down Highway 11, potentially even 316. It was awesome. It was crazy. It was a huge turnout. So thank you to all our volunteers, all our sponsors, everybody that participated in today. It was a huge success.
Good morning. I'm Dallas Ladaff, Superintendent of the Barrow County School System, and I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who made giving these bookbags away today possible.
My name's Ellen Petrie. I'm the School and Community Relations Specialist for the school system, and I am so very grateful to this incredible community of 30 or 40 businesses, organizations, civic clubs, and individuals that provided over 2,400 bookbags. We are Barrow blessed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Barrow County.
Thank you so much to the supporters who made this event possible. The 2024 Bookbag Drive wouldn't have been possible without the very generous support of more than 30 or 40 churches, businesses, civic clubs, and countless individuals. We were able to share 2,400 bookbags filled with school supplies with Barrow students. We are Barrow blessed. Thank you. Hi, I'm Barbie Culp, and I am the Mentor Coordinator for Barrow County Schools.
I'm Rita Brookshire. I've taught in Barrow County schools for 26 and a half years, and I have recently retired, but I am trying to mentor again. Well, right now, I am mentoring at County Line, and I have a little girl that's in fourth grade, and she's just a quiet, shy little thing. We mostly talk. I have asked her about academics and what her favorite subjects are and her hobbies. And she tells me about these things, but she always leads me back to, she just wants to talk. She doesn't necessarily want to do anything. Last year, I did have a child at Holson Becca Elementary, and he was a kindergartner, and we would do different things together. We would go play something, you know, he liked magnets, so we would go play for about 30 minutes and talk. Sometimes I would read a story to him. The counselor asked me last year, maybe reading something to help with behavior, and we would talk about the character in the book and why this character should or shouldn't do something. And then sometimes we would just play. And he looked forward to me coming and just needed that time to himself, time out of the classroom with that special someone, and nobody else got that. And I think he really thought that was pretty special. In the classroom, I was just shown that I really, you know, we really, really need mentors and more of them. We need somebody there for some of those children because it seems like, especially the last few years that I taught, there are more and more children, and as we had talked, more and more children that are lacking a wholesome family life with adults that are present all the time. And if these children can just have a few minutes of someone's time on a regular basis, that's really what they need.
If you have an extra 30 minutes a week, there is a student in Barrow County that needs you.
So my name is Andy Dean.
My name is Amber Hagee.
My name is Allison Kramer, and I'm the Graduation Specialist at Wynder Barrow High School.
Oh, okay. I'm looking at the next one. Because I'm on it, so.
So when is, when is it going to be?
Third Thursday of September.
What is?
I'm not on it.
No.
I haven't been on it in a while.
Oh, your turn's coming.
It's coming up.
At least, at least it's you, me, and Jordan.
Uh, Ricky, you already signed this, right?
Howdy, guys. Welcome back. At this time, I'd like to request for a motion to approve the personnel report as presented. Ms. Stevens, Ms. Malou, all in favor? Motion passes. All righty, if there's, at this time, if there's nothing else to discuss amongst the board, we are adjourned. Y'all have a good night.
I'm going to motion for committees to meet. Will they have clean schools? Oh, they don't have it now?
Right.
Jordan, do we have a form?
It's coming down.
Okay.